With that, let's see. I think what we were waiting for was to see what the plans were, definitive plans, to be able to put 10 cars for resale and to manage heavy equipment to be limited. And the petitioner is going to present us, we hope, with the plans.
I live on Waylon Road, right across from Mr. Aliva. I've got some photos from the past winter of stuff in his yard. And that's my biggest concern, is draped on the side.
Wait a minute. You're not prepared for you. You have to get up.
Oh.
And on the screen, I mean, we're on television.
Okay.
Right here, I'll give you your name and address.
Anthony Nacastro, 88 Waylon Road.
Okay.
In Lunenburg.
We have...
What was the number, please?
Eighty-eight, sir.
Yeah. We have a procedure to go, but since this is a continuation of the meeting, public discussion was opened at the last hearing, obviously you didn't get an opportunity. But since it's a continued hearing, then we will reopen for public discussion so that you can say your piece. And that's with the permission of the board. Is that all right with the board?
I'm okay with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead. We get procedures. We gotta do things by the numbers.
Sorry, sir.
Sometimes we end up in court and we gotta make sure we didn't make a mistake.
So, like I said, I live at eighty-eight, right across the street, and it's all well and good during the summertime. He runs a business, does his thing, he's got plenty of room. But during the wintertime, when there's a lot of snow on the ground and he's got all those heavy equipment, I like to know his plans on what he's gonna do with these vehicles. Is he gonna pull them out of the lot, clog up the road while he clears out his lot, stuff like that. It's a very small lot, so, and he has a few vehicles coming in and out. I got some pictures over the past...
I'd be happy to pass them to Lisa, please.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, do we have anybody else who wants to make contact, to make comments? And then is Mr. Aliva?
Yes. Ready?
Pardon?
Ready?
I'm ready.
Want me to introduce myself again?
Yeah, that'd be appropriate, 'cause some people might not have caught the first act.
Right. My name is Edward Aliva. I'm here from ninety-three Waylon Road, looking to renew my Class II license and my repair, a repair license at Waylon Sales and Service. I also have with me tonight is a revised plan that I had from two weeks ago. I made a few changes, if the board would like to see the new plan.
It would've been nice, would you get one copy?
Yes.
Would it've been nice if you would give us one for each?
I have, I have two copies.
Oh, it'd be five, it would've been wonderful. By the way, since there is, just to get formal, since nobody else wants to speak, then I'm gonna cut off public discussion, and we're in deliberation from last time, just for the record. Are you not gonna give the chair any, huh?
We're gonna have to share.
Well, they can give you feedback.
Just, don't worry, we'll see it all. We'll share.
The changes I made on the plans where I put employee parking, I also put where there would be a repair of a truck, if a truck came in for repair, where the repaired truck would park, and also in the right rear of the property, I laid out where I would place three or four Sanders that I would have for sale, along with plows that would be also for sale in the right rear corner of the lot.
I have one comment. I went down and, two weeks ago I took pictures, which I had nineteen, combination of trucks, junk vehicles, and junk piles. And I've got my follow-up, which I have in a car, and we're down to eighteen, so we're one-plus. And another thing that's came to my attention is the big truck, apparently you're parking that as a permanent parking spot. I think that there's been, the last time I was there, it was off the, on the street, and this time it's on the street. Is that your intention of parking on the street?
Oh, absolutely not.
Pardon?
Absolutely not.
It seemed to me there could be some problems with, and then if we, if we settled on some type of configuration, and if that were to break up the configuration and be in violation, then that becomes problematic. That's why I raised the issue in that regard. But I would like your comments, because what I'm seeing that you presented in front of the board, and what I currently see is real-time, eighteen things. And some of them are real junk. The attached to the back end of the building is junk, and it's still junk. It was junk last time, it's this time. It would appear that you're asking this board to grant you the authorization to do a used car lot. And the mandatory things to achieve that objective is probably somewhat related to the drawing you proposed, but it doesn't seem like you have any intentions of complying with your proposal, even if that was acceptable. What is your comment to that? Because this is two weeks, are we going, where I think we're at, and it's up to the board, is if, personally, one, if I was to want to grant, and you heard people say they'd like to work with you, because it might be in the better interest of the neighbors if there was to be an orderly situation down there, so that the value of their properties could get enhanced, because it's friendly. But I don't see the friendliness personally, I'm just meaning, not the board speaking. And I think, I'd like you to address what is, what you've done, and if we were to approve, how could we approve if the land isn't prepared to accept what you say you're gonna do? And I'll stop there, and ask your response.
Well, to start with, where the used cars will be on the right side of the building, if we were to go down there right now, there is room for the ten cars that I have proposed to put.
I see that.
Car lot. Excuse me?
I said, I can see that.
Right.
But there's a lot of stuff in its way to achieve...
He loaded that, and I'll probably go through the eighteen pieces that you probably took pictures of today or last week, the, one of which is a loader, which I do, a small loader that starts and runs, that I use to move things around the yard, especially if something is, comes in not running, we push it in the garage, or we can lift a plow or lift a sander with the loader. So that's, that's one of the eighteen pieces. The other thing I've asked for is to be able to store plows, which I think there's five plows, five or six plows there. And I, I don't think a plow is an unsightly picture. I mean, I think a lot of homeowners have plows in their pickup trucks that they disconnect for the summers, and people have two and three pickup trucks in their yard with plows. I didn't think a plow was an unsightly...
So you're saying that you might wanna put ten or fifteen plows there, not to be unsightly?
I'm not asking for ten or fifteen, but I...
I'm not sure where you're going. The plows that I seen there are not in an absolute orderly manner. So I look and I see them straight in a line, I see a plow here, a plow here, a plow here. This is what concerns me, and I'm talking too much, I should let the board talk. Go ahead, and if you wanna respond to what I just said. Because remember, there's another, you've got two hurdles to get over. And if we can achieve something that's gonna be neat and orderly to conduct a business that makes someone want to buy your cars off the property...
Right, exactly.
You get that, but now, if we, if we agree and come to some resolution, you still have to go in front of the Board of Selectmen to get the Class II license.
Right.
And so you've got another objective, and you've got one more that needs to be addressed and will be addressed, and I don't know how we're gonna do it, but the Board of Health wants to get involved. And for us to casually say, "We grant subject to approval of the Board of Health," is, in my mind, not appropriate. He's going to be able to do it tomorrow, and, but we get that issue. So there are three issues that need to be addressed. And with that, I'm concluding my comments. Do you have anything further to say?
I can continue on saying...
If you wanna talk, or I'm gonna turn it over to the board and they can ask...
Turn it over to the board.
Would you like a cut? One of these is your reference, you know, you don't have anything in front of you, so...
I can, I memorize this, so keep it in front of you, and I can reference anything that's there.
My question was, or is, when I look at this, about the addition added that's on here, because on your very first one, there was no such thing, whereas on the added copy that you gave us two weeks ago, there was the addition added, but I didn't notice it anywhere else.
You're saying the dogleg?
No, this addition, this here is added. When I looked at the original...
It was on the last one, Jim. The only thing, at least it was on the one that I had, but I didn't see he's added the plows.
Yeah, the plows are new this time, the Sanders, but on the very original one, there was no addition...
Oh, I see.
On that. And I was looking to see what covered it here, to see whether it was, needed a permit for that.
Can I comment on, okay to comment on the addition?
Don?
Pardon?
Is it okay to comment on the addition?
Please.
The addition that's listed there was something that was added on, I think twenty years ago, and just to make that an accurate print, it just shows it, an addition that was added on some period ago. It's nothing that's been done recently, or that I'm asking...
So this is as-is right now?
Yes, it should say as-is, addition as-is, not...
Thank you.
Where the addition, the third, the back addition, that's the complete junkyard back there. That's, and I was, if I walked down where you're gonna put the cars and put it there, that's, it's junk, really bad.
Well, the older is the older.
If you walk around the back and there's all tires there, so that's a junkyard. And I expected that to be gone by this time of this meeting. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, right adjacent to the addition and behind where it says existing, you've got a storage box, but you don't show it here on the print. There's that white box.
Yes, there is a storage box there.
But you haven't indicated it here on the drawings that you give it us. Any reason for omitting that?
I didn't, I didn't put the storage box on there. 'Cause it wasn't a permanent fixture, I guess that's why I didn't, I didn't list that on the, on the plan.
Do you intend to move it, is it gonna stay there?
I intended on leaving it there.
Okay. What's inside, if I may ask?
Inside of it is, we have some tires, some tools, some sander chains, sander pots inside.
It's just a storage, then, basically?
Yes.
I mean, it just would've been, to be more accurate, had you shown that there in the drawing.
Should've been on the plan.
Should be there. Did you contact the Board of Health? That was our question at the end of the last...
Yes, I called, I called last week, and Board of Health came down Monday of this week, and they inspected the property. And unbeknownst to all of us, Jim Griffey from the Board of Health, he is on vacation this week, and he had somebody covering for him, and she came down, inspected the property on Monday, and I called her today, asking for an updated report, and she called me this afternoon and said that Mr. Griffey would like to be, to do the final inspection tomorrow, and then he will contact the Building Department.
By the way, can we, you little guy, he doesn't need to stand up unless he wants to. Do you wanna stand up? If you don't want, you can sit down. Whatever you wanna do.
He's getting a civics lessons.
Huh?
He's getting a civics le, civics lesson.
Well, yeah, he is.
Yeah, so back to the Board of Health, he, he wanted to do the final inspection, and he's due back tomorrow.
Yeah, and we need to, we need to have his inspection done, I would think.
Right.
I, go ahead. I got other questions.
I went by again today, and it looks like on the yard, you know, I guess in one way it seems to me that it was evident to me that you've attempted to clean the place up some, but it still has a ways to go. And the reason I say that is I have in mind, one of the comments that was made by one of the people present at the last time, is that there's a adverse effect on the value of the residential property surrounding yours. As we talked the last time, you have a commercial lot, but it's sitting there like an island, and it's surrounded by residential property. And if it is not kept neat and clean, that has an adverse effect on the residences that abut you are close by. And so that's one of my concerns. The other thing that I noted when I went down today, is it looks like there is oil-absorbent material scattered on the ground. I don't know what it, what it was, that's what it appeared to be to me. You can tell me what it was, if it was something different. But it raises a question in my mind of the point made by Mr. Griffey in his letter to the board. The last item was, indicates the materials leaked onto the ground. I know that you took exception to that, but it triggered in my mind that comment when I saw the material, which to me appeared to be like oil-absorbent material. Would you care to comment?
After talking to the Board of Health last week, his concern was, he says, he noted from the street, there were oil spots on the asphalt, and, and the only way to get, the main ingredient of asphalt is oil and stone, and, and if we were to go to Walmart right now, or Market Basket, where cars parked, a car can, every, most cars, a lot of cars have a drip now and again, if, over a period of time you'll have some, some drips. And he asked me if I would somehow clean up those oil spots, and the, the only way to do it, other than, other than digging up the driveway, was to use washed sand. It's not, it's not speedy dry, but it's just basic sand out of a bankin', with no stones in it. And I swept it around the spots that Mr. Griffey had noted, and when he comes tomorrow, you will see that the, the oil spots are, are as menial as they can possibly be without, without digging up the driveway. I can, what I'm gonna do is put those, put that sand in five-gallon pails and dispose of it properly, is the, is the best way to handle that, those spots that he was talking about.
Okay, I would just like to follow up a little bit. My feelings are basically the same as the chairman's, in the sense that I just don't, I expected to see more progress in the two weeks. I know it's a lot to do in two weeks, but I expected to see a little more progress than, than what there was. There is a lot of discarded parts, I know that, you know, the last hearing you said one man's junk is another man's treasure and all of that, but when, one of the conditions in, in us granting a car lot is that there are no cast-off parts, no junk, no, and I don't have it right in front of me, but that is one of the conditions. And I have to agree with the chairman, I don't think that you've prepared your lot yet for us to actually act on what you're asking for. It's just not far enough. I think you've got a little ways to go to remedy the situation, get rid of some of the stuff that's there, and continue to prepare your property for a used car lot. And I know that you're still gonna talk with the Board of Health tomorrow now, and so it almost sounds to me like maybe we're, we're here premature. We had asked if two weeks was enough. At the time, I didn't think it was enough, but you had said, oh yeah, two weeks is great. But I really think that we're just here premature, at this point. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I have only one expanded comment. As I said in the first time, when I went down there two weeks ago, which I filmed, there are nineteen things, and I identify a thing as a pile of junk, an unrepairable vehicle or something, some repairables, a combination. I counted nineteen, and the truck off the road, the big one. And now the truck is off the road, so that's not counted, but I think that you got a problem, because if, if the police said, you gotta get it off there, you'd have, then they'd be on there, so that'd be twenty. You've put out a plan here, and I compliment you on the plan, because it starts to show that your plan is to make it reasonably orderly, I think. But there's nine other things that you've got down there that don't, you, they're not here. So those nine others, whatever they are, need to go. You see, you wanna have a used car lot, that's what your mission is. And you also wanna do accessory to it, to have the contracting trucks that you use to make a lemon, and you need that. But then the other things, is, well, you just pile them up, you say, what the hell, I'll just throw them here, but that, now it becomes, you could define it as a junkyard. We don't allow it, certainly not junkyards. So we're moving, you're moving towards, and the board so announced would like to help to make something nice, and to the benefit of all parties. And the neighbors, if they could see it cleaned up, I think we'd, we'd endorse any approval in our board that we could reasonably see. And then you'd have to get over the hurdle of the Board of Selectmen, because they got, they don't, they know it, you can't have. So the map, starting to look reasonable to me, but the actuality isn't there. What are you gonna do about it? And, and, and do we grant you, on the hope that you'll do it? I don't think we'd let you have the first cars there until the day it was ready to receive them in an orderly fashion. It's a problem. Can you help us?
You're happy with the design? You're okay with the design that's in front of you?
Not committed, I'm saying, it's a, it's a long, long way from what is to what has. Now, now, see, you've got this spur that goes back, I don't know, there's wetlands back there. I don't know if that meets the requirements of the Board of Health for you to do those things. That has to, you have to meet that test. So you've got, you've taken and you put plows, plows up there. Now those plows could be important to your business, and if you've set them back, they're not set back now, they're here and here and here, but you show them in an orderly fashion, further off the property, which opens up the property to, to the, to the observers being reasonable. And then, now you turn around and you put, there are two, there are two things, I don't know what these are.
Sanders.
They what?
Sanders.
Sanders? Oh, the Sanders.
Yeah.
Okay, so the Sanders, you've got three Sanders down there, and then two trucks, and then two repairs, two repairs. I, and by the way, you've ignored the junk. The junk has to go, absolutely, in my opinion. You've got five men here, they might want junk, I don't personally. So, so what do, and then there's nineteen things, so are we, are you, do you think that this board is prepared to grant? That's a fair question.
Not on what you just said.
Yes.
So, to get my license, and to go by that plan that's in front of you right now, I will have to remove six tires, one loader, two plows, three bumpers that I, that I use...
And I wouldn't object to the plows, if the plows are being hooked up to make you money in the winter.
Well, also for resale, which is what I'm, I'm asking for here tonight also. Also, the plows and Sanders are for resale, not just, not just for my use. But we have to wait for Mr. Griffey to, to do a final inspection on the property before you could even consider granting me the, granting me the license. So it looks like we have to go into the next, the next session, so if Mr. Griffey...
Are you suggesting that we, that we continue this meeting to say that, Lisa? What's the next possible date?
July tenth or July twenty-fourth.
The tenth is, maybe it's like the tenth, I won't be here.
That'd be perfect. I want you here, Don, I want you here.
I think the twenty-fourth oughta be appropriate, because, because what he has to do takes time, and I can appreciate it, it takes time. It's pretty hard for you to tomorrow go out and...
It really isn't, even though it seems like there's a lot there that you don't accept, it really won't take me long to, to remove it.
But you haven't yet, though, you know, you had two weeks.
No, I, I'm having a hard time removing the plows, 'cause that's what I'm asking to keep, but like Don said, maybe a little bit neater with the plows.
More organized, I think, is...
Square things, you know, like, if, things are neat in a row, proportioned to size and so forth, so that even if they, they're tough-looking, and those Sanders can get tough-looking, but one's this model, one's that model, the other model, by the time you get them, it looks like a pile of junk in combination, the way they are.
Right.
But if they had their own slots, individual, so that you can back up and take them out, that's wonderful, I think.
And I did read that line in your requirements today, that, you know, there's...
That's my comment.
You don't want anything outside.
What do you guys think of...
I think it needs to address the question about wintertime use. If you've got these plows and Sanders piled up in the back section two, and there's almost no place to put the snow as it is, never, around the town in general, you're a car lot, if we put them, they could be very easily buried, and, you know, that's not appropriate. So what is the long-range plan for that type of material, in light of the fact that you're asking for ten cars in the front, or, you know, up to ten cars, and then all these things in the back for winter use? Are you gonna move the cars to be able to get to the back, or...
With the, the loader that's parked in the yard, is what I usually do, snow removal at the garage with, and I stack the snow high in the air, so I've got room to put the snow and still be able to move around the yard, which is what I've done the last few years, is stack the snow high, rather than a pile backed up against each other.
What is the board's comment on what we have in front of us?
Well, I repeat my concern, I guess, this is a lot that is in total less than an acre, and a good, I don't know, it's hard to tell from looking at this plot, plan, how much of that .9 acres is on wetlands and extends on that long spur that goes back.
A third of it is the spur.
Yeah, so you're down to .6 acres, and it seems like an awful lot to me on .6 acres, given that, as I said before, it's in the middle of a residential area. Because that's, you know, this and the, and the church next door, as best as I can tell from looking at the zoning map that's, that we have, it's minuscule, but it doesn't seem like there's much of any commercial property in that area, other than your lot and the church next door. What is that, Church of God? Shows on here. So that combined with the fact that it has an adverse effect, in my opinion, on the residential properties that are in that neighborhood, because if it were picture-perfect according to your diagram, and maintained that way, that would be another issue. But we have yet to see evidence that what you picture here can come to be. And we have the matter of the Board of Health inspection, which we haven't heard from, and there's just too much left hanging in the air, in my opinion, for us to consider approval of this request at this point in time.
Are you endorsing a continuation?
If, if, yeah, I would support a continuation if, if he wants to pursue this, but I don't see that we have anything that we can... this, but, uh, I don't see that we have any, anything that we can move forward with here now.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I think tonight was premature.
Pardon?
I believe tonight was premature.
Yeah.
We don't have enough answers.
Yeah.
But, but again, I think I would emphasize, and I think what Ray is saying, that, you know, we, we really not just have to see on a drawing, we have to see it for real. And that means that the next time we, we have a hearing, we're not going to continue, continue, continue. So if we say the 24th, we really need to, to see what this property is, what it's going to look like, and what it really looks like, and what it can really hold. Um, so I guess I'm saying, be realistic. It's like cleaning your cellar, something. You take everything out, you discard everything that you say, I haven't used this.
Start over.
Yeah, I got to sell this, whatever. Then you reorganize and, you know, put down what you're really doing, if there's any changes, and come back before us. Um, generally, every board member goes and looks at the property before a hearing again. So it isn't like you're going to come and give us a drawing and say, this is what I'm going to do, it's going to be great. We're going to question you as we have, because we've seen the property. So that's only suggestion I can make to you.
Very good.
Okay, then we've cleared the Board of Health by that time.
Exactly.
So that'll be out of the way. And, uh, if things get cleaned, straight and palatable, so that your neighbors will say, hooray, uh, in spite of the fact that it's still a business, but you have a right to be there with your business, then the, uh, Board of Selectmen, of course, would probably be more favorable to your, your, your business plan.
Very good.
Should he also, while he's going through this, um, put down on paper what his plans are for wintertime use of the property, and how it might be different than what it is in the summertime use?
I could do that.
You know, for your availability and forethought at the same time, you know, rather than just-
That's part of your business plan, I would expect.
Yes.
Yeah. In other words, you're into the used car business, and it has a certain pendulum, and then you're in the-
Sanding business in the winter.
And it has its, you're hopeful that the combination, the two will afford you enough money to make a decent living for yourself.
Right.
And, uh, certainly we're not opposed to that, and the town is, likes it because it gets the taxes out of you at the same time.
Right.
So, okay, uh, the chairman's, will accept a motion?
Make a motion to continue to July 24th?
Second. Okay, uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor continuing?
Before we vote on that, let me ask.
On what?
Because the five members that are here will be the voting members.
Yeah.
Are all, five of us going to be voting on the 24th?
Oh, yeah, on the 20th.
24th.
24th.
24th. Everybody safe? Okay.
Yeah, my weekend's, but I think my weeks are okay, so.
Could you just ask, we have a hearing prior to that, which might be lengthy for the warehouse on Limits to Shirley Road, so I don't know if you want to say 7:45?
On that night, you're saying there's already a hearing scheduled?
Already scheduled.
Well-
At 7.
Since we don't know how long we're going to be, in terms of what you, you've came around, because you see, we can, we chew up a half hour, easy, it's 35 minutes. Uh, the other one, we don't know, but it's a business operation, so that could take some time. You could, uh, what are your thoughts? Give the other one an hour, or just the standard half hour and then ask to continue? In other words, we bring on the other one first, and we schedule it for 7 o'clock to 7:30, but then we ask if it's getting, you know, if it goes easy, it's fine. If it doesn't, we'll ask you, because you'll be second, if we can continue and take another half hour, if you would. So if you're prepared to, uh, well, then you could be here at 7:30, so you only got maybe a half hour to wait. Is that okay?
That's fine. That's fine.
Work it out that way. You think that's appropriate? Okay, why don't we do it that way? So the date and time certain will be at 7:30?
July 24th.
July 24th.
Just to toss it up for consideration, I, you know, judging that, that, that first hearing is, our likelihood's going to take longer than a half hour, would, what about the merits of scheduling, uh, him at 8 o'clock, so he's not-
Yeah, that's, that's a possibility. Then we can sit around and chat if, if the thing is, goes through like-
If we finish early, send off a car.
See, that's the only problem, is if we commit to a time, then we have to commit to that time for the opening or the continuation. But, uh, but I appreciate what you're saying. Do you want to make it 8 o'clock?
I think it's more likely timeframe.
Make it 8 o'clock, everybody agrees? So we'll make it 8 o'clock.
Sounds good.
The date and time specific is the 24th at 8 o'clock. And you've got work to do.
Thank you.
Despite of the heat.
Thank you.
It's very hot.
Okay, thank you.
I think you need it all in favor on the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you do.
Take a motion to the chair.
No, no, on the motion to reschedule.
Oh, 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 I, we already did that.
We didn't do the all in favor.
Okay, we'll make a motion to, yeah, that's right, we moved, we played with it. Uh, the chairman accepts the motion.
Well, the motion is made.
Motion is made, we have to vote on the motion.
You second it?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you're talking.
We did it. So I make a motion that the chairman-
Aye, aye.
Second.
You don't do that to all of them.
No.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to turn it off. We're off here.
I didn't, I didn't want that to end. That was beautiful. So, so Mike, what did you hear in that piano puzzler?
Okay, I'm going to start with the hidden tune. Um, it's a Beatles song. I'm trying to remember the title. It's doo 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 doo. Is it "And I Love Her"?
Yes, absolutely. Nicely done.
Good. Um, the composer, I'm going to fish for a little bit, sounds like a sort of French 20th century impressionist composer.
Yes, very good so far.
Debussy?
Correct.
Okay.
Nicely done. So the Beatles tune, "And I Love Her," in the style of Claude Debussy. Mike, that was great.
Well, Bruce, yours was better.